And we were with Senator Siniklas. Senator Siniklas, are you done?
Okay. I thought that we had supposed to get to the last one.
No, yes, so on the main motion, on the main motion. Senator Torres, did you still wish to speak on the main motion?
Yes.
You were up. Thank you. You're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. On the motion with regard to Bill 102-33, I just want to speak in support of the bill as a whole. I think that much of the discussion that ensued prior to our recess had to do with gender orientation and gender expression. But I think the other part of this bill that I would like to applaud the author for recognizing is the inclusion of the veteran status and military status into the bill. As we all know, many in our community are members of the Reserve, and I believe the statistics, last I recall, was one in nine people on Guam have some involvement with the military service. So I think that with that proportionate number of our citizens being with the military, it's also incumbent on us to include them in any legislation that has to do with discrimination in the workplace. And for that, I just want to reiterate that I'm in full support of this bill, and I think that it was very wise of the author to include that other segment of society that oftentimes we overlook and need to give a little more credence to because of their service to the community and the nation as a whole. Sijous Massey.
You're very welcome, Senator Torres. On the main motion, I'm going to go ahead and recognize Senator Jimmy Espaldon on the main motion.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, for the most part, I support this bill. There is one section that was brought up earlier, and I'm just going to reiterate my concern because now I'm torn about how to vote on this bill. I support the substantive measure within this bill, and that's for making sure that there is no discrimination in the workplace for gays and lesbians and others. The problem I have that really is going to have to make me really think about how I'm going to vote on this bill, though, is all issue with, that was brought up earlier on an amendment which failed, right, in which basically it shall be unlawful for an employment practice or unlawful discrimination for any employer to refuse to hire or employ or to bar or discharge from employment or otherwise to discriminate against any individual in compensation or in terms, comma, conditions or privileges of employment because of race, sex, including sex, gender identity or expression. And the reason why I have, and perhaps I didn't articulate myself earlier when we were addressing the amendment that sought to remove the term gender expression, I may have failed to express more adequately how I felt, but it brings to concern unintended consequences, which I mentioned earlier. And one of them is, and this is where I'm going to perhaps be a little more succinct, is if, and this is going to be one of those rhetorical questions, if, say for example, a gentleman, I'll even use myself as an example, if I decide, as a male, I decide that tomorrow I want to dress as a female because that would be my gender expression for the day, right, does that mean that I can come in at the office and my employer cannot discriminate against me because I wanted to use the restroom facilities that a woman might want to use? And again, the concern I have is this kind of leaves kind of the door open for an unintended consequence where we have somebody who might not really be gay or homosexual, gay or lesbian or, you know, but may just be curious as to see what's inside the female's bathroom and what they look like and what they do and just get a good look. Would that be considered discrimination? Or is the employer going to have to force the female-dressed male, you know, would he be able to command him and say, "No, you have to go to the male's bathroom, the men's bathroom"? The problem here, again, is that we may be opening it up to unintended consequences where we have people who may be sexually deviant try to use this law just to be able to further their deviance. And I'm not sure if I'm expressing myself well on that, but again, my concern is, in simpler terms, if my daughter and wife were in the restroom and somebody wanted to come in and say, "I want to see what they, you know, I want to take a peek in," and if I come in tomorrow dressed as a female, I should be allowed to use the female restroom because that is my gender expression. And then the issue is, can the employer forbid that? We don't know. We haven't entered that discussion yet. And so I'm troubled by the inclusion of the specific language, and it causes me pause of whether I can actually support this bill because of what I can see coming down the road as perhaps litigation, as perhaps even a violation, a criminal violation, I would imagine, well, no longer would be criminal, I suppose, if a man walks in with a dress on into the female's bathroom, it would no longer be criminal because that would be a gender expression. So, Madam Speaker, and I just want to raise that because it gives me, gives me great pause to really try to understand whether I will support this bill or not. I support it because of what it really, for the most part, stands for, that there should be no sexual, there should be no discrimination based on sexual orientation, but it goes further than that and says that there should be no discrimination against sexual, excuse me, against gender expression. And that gender expression, we don't know how far the limits would be to employers, what it would cost employers and what it would cost really society in general as a policy to be able to allow that to be practiced. So I am troubled at this point on this bill, and I thank you for this opportunity to at least express it. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Sijous Massey, Senator Espaldon. Anyone else wishing to speak on the main motion? If not, Vice Speaker Cruz, would you like to close on the motion?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Before I proceed to closing, I want to thank my female colleagues for helping me be strong and stay the course. I suppose the fact that the three of you have suffered a lifetime of discrimination has given you the unenviable experience of having experienced discrimination, and as a consequence, you're more attuned to it and more willing to fight for it as hard as you can. And I have to admit that I'm not sure if it's arrogance or self-confidence or just obtuseness that I didn't realize that I was being discriminated against, but I'm sure I was, but I was able to rise above it, and so I'm not quite as affected as some of you are or have been. So in recognition of the fact that the three of you have really been my backbone on this one and not allowed me to water this bill down or allow this bill to be watered down, I'd ask that the three of you be listed as co-sponsors of this legislation.
Thank you.
If that was possible, and we just go with the way that everybody spoke, which would have been Senator Torres who made the initial objection, and I unfortunately convinced her to withdraw it, and thankfully Senator Neresanderwood objected, and you allowed her objection to go through, so it could be in that order, but just to recognize and thank the three of you for having helped me stand straight and stand tall. And I also just want to thank the women in this community. At the hearing on this bill, it was the Women's Chamber of Commerce, represented by Ms. Jackie Marotti, that came and spoke. It was the Female Vice President of Human Resources at the Bank of Guam, Ms. Obispo, that spoke in favor of the bill. It was Ms. Munia, Ms. Joanne Munia from SHRM, the Society of Human Resource Management, and she was very, very, very adamant about supporting this piece of legislation, even to the point of reminding us at least a half dozen times during her testimony that SHRM is an international organization with 1,600 branches and chapters and that it's a very strong organization and that they're fully behind it. I also want to thank Mrs. Maria Conley, who, if you read the committee report, had a very strong statement in support of the bill. And recognizing that Department of Labor, which today or later on today, we're going to be merging into one, but the U.S. Department of Labor understands that this is something that has to be addressed and has been issuing regulations as regards to that. And I want to thank a young woman, Ms. Lassie Casill, who gave probably the most emotional testimony, helping me especially, recognize that this has occurred in our community and needs to be addressed. And so first, I want to thank those of you women that have helped me stay the course in this one. And also, I want to acknowledge, and the point was made by the senator from Santa Rita, that at the hearing, the Brigadier General of the National Guard came and testified in favor of this bill, as did the new Director of the Office of Veterans Affairs. And we wouldn't need as large an ESGR on this island if there wasn't this problem, but thankfully, we have the ESGR in this community, and their advocates are out there making sure and trying to make sure that this community remains focused on supporting our National Guardsmen and our reservists who leave their families for short periods, some of them for extended periods and sometimes three or four times over the last 10 years, some of them even more. I know people at the court who've gone five times. So it really is important that I acknowledge the fact that both of them came in support of this piece of legislation. And I'm not going to get into some of the arguments that were made, I mean, it's just, I don't think it's necessary. I just want to thank everybody that has helped me try to move this thing forward, tried to bring us into the 21st century, and I know that some of you supported me five years ago when I tried to do marriage equality. We got caught up in minutia, and it failed. Thankfully, the courts addressed it. I'm hoping this time, we, like 30 other states, like a couple of hundred other municipalities, will take the lead and make sure that there isn't discrimination in the workplace against our LGBT community, because as the Fortune 500 companies realize, it's not an issue of discrimination, it's an issue of trying to get the best individuals, employees for their companies, and it's their bottom line that they're concerned about. And they don't want to exclude anybody who could possibly be of value to their organization. And we all have something to offer, and some of us with sexual orientations that are different from the rest of you have. And I hope that, in spite of my orientation, that I have contributed to this community, and I thank this community for not discriminating against me and allowing me to fulfill and be as constructive as I can and have been. And I just like to make sure that the other members of our community are able, to be able to have that same opportunity in this community. So, Madam Speaker, I thank you on my motion, I'm sorry I didn't, on my motion to include the three of you.
That's okay. I'll go ahead and work both motions in.
Okay. And so on the motion to send it down and also the co-sponsorship.
Yes. On the motion to add Senator Mary Torres, Senator Neresanderwood, and Senator Munia Barnes to the sponsorship of the legislation 102, without any objection, motion carries. Also to move Bill 102-33COR to the third reading file, no objection, motion carries. Next on the agenda, ladies and gentlemen, if I'm not mistaken, Bill 104-33LS, and I'd like to acknowledge my brother, Senator Frank Blosch, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I moved, we placed Bill Number 104-33LS into the third reading file, and I'd like to have an opportunity to speak to it.
And that is as amended, right, Senator?
No.
No? As introduced.
As introduced.
Just wanted to make sure, Senator, the agenda shows as amended, and I want to make sure that everybody's reading on the right copy, so it's just as introduced.
Yes, ma'am.
On that, to the third reading, please go ahead and speak.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, Bill 104-33 is an act to repeal 19GCA Chapter 22 to repeal 5GCA subsection 3120 and add a new article to, a new Article III to 22GCA Division 1, Chapter 1, the Department of Labor. What this bill essentially does, Madam Speaker, is it brings in to the fold, as we speak today, or actually legally, for lack of a better term, there still exists the Department of Labor and the Agency for Human Resource Development. Earlier in the year, the governor had signed an executive order that basically placed AHRD under the fold of the Department of Labor. What this bill would do is basically would make that into law, bring the Agency for Human Resource Development into the fold of the Department of Labor and actually help to build or create the division that would continue to carry on the mandates of AHRD. I saw the need, we saw the need for this bill, Madam Chair, so that what we do is we make sure that there continues to be that synergy between the two agencies, and because they do have ultimately the same responsibility, and that is basically to help to create and sustain a workforce on our island. And I believe that with the introduction of this bill and that if this were to occur, you'll create that synergy. Now, I would like to be able to make sure, just to assure my colleagues, that what this does, it doesn't take anything away from what AHRD and Labor already do, it just makes it stronger. It doesn't take away, in as far as employees, but what it probably would do is actually, it does remove, in as far as the Director of the AHRD, and it folds everything under the auspices of the Director of the Department of Labor. And with that, that, you know, the Department of Labor then has an opportunity to structure its organization so that it does create, you know, that entity that can better serve our community by the creation of, you know, workforce development through the many trainings that it has, through the relationship that it developed with not just the public sector but also with the private sector and the federal government. There has been discussions already with the federal counterparts within the Department of Labor, and those counterparts, federal counterparts, that were working with the AHRD, and they have, actually, they applaud, you know, this move, and I think this is going to be something that will help us to move into basically the next area of developing the workforce that is necessary to continue to grow our island economy. So with that, Madam Speaker, I, you know, moving to places in the third reading, but I recognize and listen to any of my colleagues for any suggestions or any comments that they may have.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak on the main motion? Senator Mike Siniklas, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'm just looking at the operative language of the bill, and on pages three and four concerning employment, it does have language here that states that the Director may transfer persons in redundant or unnecessary positions to other divisions contingent on funding availability. And so in light of that authorization, I wanted to ask the sponsor of the bill if perhaps it would be necessary to include seniority as something that would be retained by those who transfer from this agency into the next.
Senator Blosch, would you like to answer that?
We're good. Okay, so I'll go to an appropriate amendment at this time, Madam Speaker. After the word pay grade on line 32, add a comma, I'd include the word seniority.
On that motion, are there any objections? No objections, motion carries.
That's on, Madam Speaker, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on that, on the main motion? If not, Senator, to move down to the third reading, no objection, motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, we are now on Bill Number 105-33LS. Senator Tommy Morrison, you're recognized.
I move to place Bill Number 105-33LS as substituted by the Committee on Appropriations and Judication. I'd like to briefly speak on it.
Please do.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Madam Speaker. Bill Number 105 as substituted was introduced to ensure that a portion of the limited gaming fund, as initially authorized by the legislature through Public Law 3260, is continuously made available to support the repair and rehabilitation of school and community recreation facilities and to support funding requirements as authorized by law. As you and our other colleagues that served during the 32nd Guam Legislature may remember, Public Law 32-60 authorizes Guam's mayors, the Department of Education, and the Department of Recreation to each receive one-third of any proceeds remaining in the limited gaming fund after costs for the administration of the fund, which is capped at 5% or set. According to BBMR, since the enactment of Public Law 3260 in July of 2013, approximately $783,236.48 and $969,633.99 for FY 2013 and FY 2014 collections respectively have since been appropriated through the passage of another law, Public Law 32-148. For the current fiscal year and as of July 2015, July 31, 2015, approximately 1.1 million has been collected and remains available for appropriation to further support upgrades to our school and community recreation facilities and to assist with the procurement of sports equipment and supplies, team sponsorships, uniforms, and other requirements as authorized by statute. Moving forward, the passage of Bill 105 would ensure that all future collections to fund would be deemed to be appropriated on a continuous basis. In closing, I wish to thank Vice Speaker Cruz for moving quickly in scheduling a public hearing on this measure after reporting Bill Number 105-33LS in time for session. I also wish to thank the Guam mayors and the vice mayors, the Department of Parks and Recreation, the Department of Education, the Department of Administration, and the Bureau of Budget and Management Research for their guidance and support on this matter. I wish to thank BBMR Director Jose Cabo for recognizing that Bill Number 105-33LS allows for long-term planning and to be implemented given the assurance of continuous funding, a continuous funding mechanism, and that while this is a simple measure at face value, the opportunities for enhancement of the healthy youth and community-based activities can better be realized. So, Madam Speaker, I, as we watch this fund continue to mature over time and as we see in the committee report, some of the projects that have been put in place by our mayors, the Department of Education and Department of Parks and Recreation, they've pointed out a lot of long-term, or short-term, midterm, and long-term projects for their specific agencies and respective villages. One of the things that, as we drive around the island, we can see some of our facilities are getting the needed attention in increments, some are pretty large and require more additional funds, but what's very important, Madam Speaker, is to point out is that this measure, as we, as we allow for the continuous appropriation, that these, our mayors, the Department of Education, and the Department of Parks and Recreation can, as noted by the BBMR Director, begin to plan accordingly and ensure that there is a funding mechanism behind these I want to thank you, Madam Speaker, for your support in this measure and moving this forward as well, working with our mayors, the Department of Parks and Recreation. I also want to thank our other co-sponsors, Senator Ada, Senator Rodriguez, and Senator Rispichu. I know the mayors have also reached out to yourself and them regarding this issue. We didn't learn about this until we were up at a groundbreaking and to realize that, hey, how are your projects are going, and come to realize, a discovery of a glitch. I know we fixed that with the hospital, and apparently we were under the assumption that this is working also with regards to the specific agencies and the mayor's counsel. So, Madam Speaker, I thank my colleagues for their support. I asked the, I know we went to a couple of, just term, a couple of deliberations on past measures to how we should portion out this fund, how we should use this fund and execute it with these three entities, and I think we've done a very good job on how they're using it, helping them to use it. So all we're doing here is allowing them to plan ahead and get these needed repairs moving. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're very welcome, Senator Morrison. Anybody else on the main motion? Senator Siniklas, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I support the author's intent here to be able to allow for the monies to be able to remain for the purposes of the villages and for their benefit. My only concern is that if we're going to be creating a mechanism by which we're going to be banking the money and allowing it to accumulate for a bigger expense later on in the future, I just want to ensure that that bigger expense is in fact going to be for the purposes of the repair and construction of sports facilities, because in the later language of the bill, we do authorize spending for team sponsorships and uniforms, and those are, those are important things to also take into consideration, we've already been through this before. But if the intent of this operative language is to create the ability to stockpile the money and save up for a bigger expense, I would hope that that bigger expense would be a, you know, a huge capital improvement project, the repairing of a major sports facility, something that would require banking the money over the years and then making one big buy. That's totally understandable. What I What I wouldn't want is for something to happen where they would accumulate the money and then three years later, you know, three and a half years later, spend all of that money on just buying, you know, uniforms and sponsoring sports teams in one year versus having had that resource available every year and versus stockpiling that money for an actual capital improvement project. So what I would like for the author to consider is if we can include language here in the amendment that he's proffering with the bill, that would specifically make the continuous appropriation language applicable to the repair and construction of sports facilities. I understand that, you know, if we're going to be allowing them to be able to bank the money, then the intent should be for us to be able to capitalize a bigger project in the future, and that would, of course, most likely be the repair and construction of sports facilities. So I'd like to proffer an amendment to the bill after the word "and" on line six. After the word "and," just add the words, "for the purposes of the repair and construction of sports facilities, comma, shall continue to be deemed appropriated." "For the purposes of the repair and construction of sports facilities, comma, shall continue to be deemed appropriated."
Is that clear to all the senators? One-minute recess, or you want to speak? A recess? Okay. A one-minute recess. Is everybody clear with the amendment proffered by Senator Siniklas? Any objection?
No objection.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And then also to a follow-up to that on page two, just going over the original language on lines 18 through 20, if you read all of that section four there on page two, you'll see that there's some repetitiveness that was written into the original language, and then there was the word "shall" that was used on line 18 that I feel at this juncture would be kind of forcing the hands of the mayors to spend it in this way versus giving them the flexibility to bankroll it for bigger projects in the future. And so I would like to proffer an amendment on page two, line 18, to strike the word "shall" and replace it with the word "may." That would be the first amendment. So they may use the money for sponsorships and uniforms and equipment.
Any objection? No objection.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And then just to kind of tighten up the language of that section, after the word "for" on line 18, striking all the way to line 19, the word "to," because that's a kind of, it's kind of repeated in the previous sentence. So if you look at that section there, it says, "The procurement of sports equipment and supplies may be used for the procurement of sports equipment and supplies." So I just take that chunk out. So the language on our read, "may be used for team sponsorships and uniforms."
Any objection? There being none.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Senator Tindman Munia Barnes.
Sisus Masia, Mr. Speaker, thank you for giving me the opportunity to rise very briefly to support 105-33LS. I'd like to thank the good sponsor of this legislation for giving me the opportunity to work closely with them. Yes, it is true that when we were at that event in Sinehanya and doing the groundbreaking ceremony to have the sports facility, the basketball court there refurbished and renovated, and the concerns that came up from several of the mayors, how the provisions of the law based on Public Law 32-60 did not give the financial arm of giving the mayor the resources that they need, we told them that we would work on this right away, and with that commitment moving forward, we are at that level here today, and I just want to say I support those efforts, and I'm sure that as we continue to move this forward, it will definitely support the development of safe and healthy youth and community activities. So the intent from the way beginning in Public Law, in the Public Law 32-60 and moving forward, working with the, giving the resources to the necessary parties, which is Parks and Recs, Mayor's Council, mayors of Guam, and to the Department of Education, that this will hopefully fix the glitch that wasn't included in the original intent of the legislation. So sisus masia, Mr. Speaker, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to rise in support. Sisus masia.
Thank you very much. Any other senator who should be heard on the main motion? On the main motion, Senator Morrison.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I also want to thank the previous speaker for her efforts in working through the years with the mayor's council. I also want to thank the previous speaker, Senator Siniklas, for addressing one of those items there that I know he was very adamant in trying to adjust regards to how we portion out with the mayors. And again, I've always agreed to how we portion out these funds and how we can cover more of a larger scope of project within our communities. The intention was always to ensure that we can break down these communities or this fund in more larger scopes with north, central, south, within the mayors, and we've been working very closely with them and how the council can agree in identifying their top priorities within their respective jurisdictions, not just in the scope of the villages, but also a larger scope, because if you do something in Sinehanya, it definitely could benefit those folks in Talafofu and so on. If you do something in Dedito, it definitely can benefit those folks around the jurisdiction. I also want to point out again, as this fund involves and allowing them to plan ahead, I want to point out that it's also in the committee report that the mayors and the Department of Parks and Recreation sought requests to see, again, as all of us were concerned in the past, I mean, how this fund will be used, and ask what and how these projects being executed, how the fund being used, and I want to thank them for providing a project list and some of the expenditures that have been made to, from Agania Heights all the way to Jigoo, from Yamada back up to Dedito. I mean, they've provided a list of projects, I believe it's in the committee report, and they'll showcase some of the work that has been done and what's lying ahead for our community. So I thank these entities for ensuring that we know, at least I know my concerns with my colleagues, that this fund is definitely being put to good use. So I thank you, Mr. Speaker, for the opportunity.
Thank you, Senator Morrison. On the motion to send the bill down, there being no objection? On the agenda next was supposed to be 116, but Senator Rodriguez is not present, so we'll skip 116 and move to 119.
Could I add a, I apologize. Could I add a co-sponsor? Can I make an amendment to add co-sponsors additional?
Go ahead.
If I could add Senator Siniklas as a co-sponsor and send him in.
Fine. Senator Tom Ada, are you ready with your bill? No?
Taking a minute recess.
We'll take a short recess.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move that we recess till 9:00 AM tomorrow.
Thank you.